35 have about three minutes before we just start without them. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, nursing schools. I mean, I think we're like the only, one of only two or three public events. Yep, yeah, yep, yep. Let me make sure they're okay and I'm gonna start. Wanted mansion. So hello, I'm Rob Curley. I'm the editor of the Spokesman Review and thank you for coming tonight. We have been doing what we call Northwest Passages, which is community events for just over five years now. And debates were one of the big impetus's. The very first public debate I attended as editor, seven years ago, had eight people there. And I thought, that's not good for democracy. So we decided we were gonna try to build an event series that the main goal would be able to do debates. For those who can't come, we're streaming it live and we are also recording it. So you'll be able to watch it again if you want. And it'll be just on our website. You can go to our election guide, which our election guide is free too. Or you can go to the Northwest Passages website and see it there. So let me go over tonight's schedule. Each, so the first debate will be for City Council Position Three between Al Merkel and Arnie Woodard. The second debate will be for City Council Position Two, Rachel Briscoe and Jessica Jaeger. And the last one will be City Council Position Six, which is Rob Chase and Tim Hattenberg. Each debate will last about 25 to 30 minutes. There'll be a five-minute intermission between each debate. So if you have to do a bio break, that would be the time to do it. Important notes about tonight's debate, because we have a limited time for each candidate. We would like it if we can hold the applause or the booing or the cheering or the whistling or anything like that till the end. So that we can get through as many questions as possible. All that does is make it so we can't get through as many. Please turn off your cell phones or at least silence them. So otherwise, I'll come over and get your name and say it on the live stream. So everyone knows it was you. So due to the debate guidelines that were issued to all of the candidates beforehand, don't sell, don't, you don't need to record on your cellphone. But I've already told you, you can see it for free and watch as many times as you want on our website. So it'll be really easy for you to share tonight's debate if you'd like. This evening's debates are being moderated by Colin Tierenne. I'll bring him up here in just a second. So here are the debate rules, and these have all already been sent to all of the candidates. It's a question and answer format. Each candidate has 60 seconds to respond to each question. Rebuttals are 30 seconds. There is a clock right here where each candidate and Colin can see the one minute and 30-second clocks right here. The candidate who answers the opening question has already been determined by coin flip and then it'll alternate for the rest of the debate. There's no formal opening statements for tonight's debate. The moderator will pose all the questions and will ask all the follow-up questions. For follow-ups, both candidates have the opportunity to respond, and the responses must be limited to 30 seconds. Moderator, Colin is, needs to ensure that the candidates stay on topic. Candidates cannot ask questions directly to each other. There can be no direct interaction between the audience and a candidate. Because we're trying to get through all of these, almost all the candidates have agreed to stay afterwards and talk. So you'll have opportunity to do that. Just be respectful. That's what we ask. I mean, if you're disruptive, we'll ask you to leave, and I'm like a nice guy. I don't like to do that. I mean, I can't even really handle it with my kids. So just, so just be respectful to everybody. I mean, I mean, seriously, let's just be nice. So our election guide is available at spokesman.com. It's on the homepage. It's easy to find. And so, and like I said, tonight's debates can be viewed on our website. So let's go ahead and begin with the first debate. Colin, can you join us up here? Colin will be our moderator for tonight. And let's bring up Al Merkel and Arnie Woodard. So thank you, guys, and thank you all for coming. And let's be respectful and, and, and let's show that democracy works.
Well, good evening, Arnie and Al. We have done a coin flip already. And the results of that coin flip, Al, you're gonna go first, and in exchange, Arnie, you will get the last word at the end. So the very first question for both of you, why do you believe you're qualified to be a Spokane Valley City Council member?
Thanks, Colin. I'd like to thank you, of course. Thank my opponent, Arnie, for being here. The spokesman for putting this on and, of course, Northwest Passages. I think my qualifications really stem from me growing up here in the valley. Originally, my parents actually worked for the Foreign Service, so I was born overseas at an Air Force base. The first time that we moved to the United States was right here, Spokane Valley. And to me, that makes Spokane Valley very special. This is my first taste of true American freedom. And I can't, you know, there's a lot of folks out there watching this tonight, a lot of folks out here in the audience who really understand what the core of the valley is. It's a beautiful, neighborhood-friendly place to live. And I guess I know that from growing up here, from going to U-High, from going to Whitworth. And I think that that makes me qualified for understanding what we need here.
Thank you, Al. Arnie? Same question to you, and I can read it again if you'd like.
Hope. I got the question. Why am I qualified? Well, first of all, I've already served for 12 years on council and a year on planning commission. I too grew up in the valley. I've lived here 70 years. I've dealt with a lot of people through a number of entrepreneurial businesses. And the interaction that you have through church, through neighborhoods, just the fact that, well, I've lived here that long. People stop me everywhere and ask me questions. And they mug me at the mall. So I try my best to answer their questions quickly if I can, or get back to them. I've always been very open to the public, to sit down and talk with anybody on anything. Whether you vote for me, like me or not, doesn't really matter. I'm here to serve the public and will continue to do so the way I have the last 13 years.
Thanks, Arnie. Al, do you feel like you need a rebuttal or do you want to move on to the second question?
No, we can just move on.
Okay. The second question for you, both of you have talked during your run for this election about how you believe the city council should focus on addressing pragmatic issues and shouldn't waste its time on things that are not within its purview. In your view, what are the city council's fundamental responsibilities and what topics should the council avoid? And Arnie, you can lead off this one.
Well, that's a fairly easy question to answer. The state law says we have three things to do. We must take care of public safety, which is about 62 to 64 cents of every dollar that we do in the Spokane Valley. That includes the eight contracts that we, we run our, our public safety under. We must do infrastructure, which most people would, would relate to roads. That does also include buildings like our precinct, the city hall, this building, or Center Place, I think I'm in Center Place. Anyhow, Center Place, and parks, parks, certainly the capital part of it. And the third thing is economic development. Economic development is maybe a little later comer to the council. We've certainly made it a priority 11 years ago and have had great success. Those are the three things. Those are our three priorities, and that's what I'll continue to focus on.
Thanks, Arnie. Al?
Yeah, I think my opponent actually structured that pretty well. Those are the three main things that the Valley City Council should do. I would also add that it's important for our city council to keep in mind the kind of city that we want to live in and to make decisions that reflect the kind of city that we want to live in. As I've been out door belling and talking to folks on the streets, I've heard a lot of, of people talking about how our growth here in the city hasn't been managed appropriately. And I think that that's an important part of the city council's decision-making, is how do we manage that growth? How do we make sure that the taxes are being paid by the appropriate people? The fees are being paid by the appropriate people so the folks who already live here don't have to pay for the growth that they aren't necessarily benefiting from. I would say that what we need to avoid is political issues, things that really don't have to do with managing the city in the areas that we just talked about.
Thanks, Al. Arnie, you have a 30-second rebuttal if you'd like it.
Well, I would, I would just simply say that the growth comes from people wanting to live here. At that point, you have to start to manage or look at, how are you going to accommodate them? And the biggest thing is housing, roads, of course, which we do pretty well in spades. But housing is an issue all over the state. The reason it's a problem here is that we only have enough contractors in Spokane County to build about 1,600 homes per year, as opposed to Cootney County, who does about 5,000. There's where our growth goes.
Thank you, Arnie. Al?
Yeah, I appreciate that, you know, managing the growth is really important. I guess that, that's the core to what I was saying, that we have to manage that growth. We have to make sure, I, I know that there's a lot of people who want to move here. But I'm running to represent the people who already live here. And I don't think that they should be, that, that the people who want to move here should be at the expense of the people who already live here. We've all paid our way into this community, and I think that the community should be the community that we moved here for it to be.
Thanks, Al. You guys kind of got into this already, but I'm gonna stick to my script. Al, you have repeatedly talked about how you believe managing new development would be one of your top priorities if you're elected. Please explain with as much specificity as possible what you think the city should do to regulate new development. And you're gonna lead off this one.
Yeah, thanks. Absolutely. That is one of my top priorities. For me, one of the things that I've been seeing, one of the things that a lot of people have been seeing, is that our city doesn't require developers to pay the same types of fees that other cities, other similar cities in our area do require them to pay. And because of that, we've been seeing different types of development happening in our city, especially recently. So what I would like to see is us put in a fee schedule and perhaps impact fees. You know, definitely looking at developer agreements, which is something that we had in the past, and emphasizing that developers should pay the true cost of what their developer, their developments actually cost our city. As I talked about just a few minutes ago, I'm perfectly fine with people wanting to use their property and having people move to our great city. But they shouldn't do it on the backs of the citizens who already live here. And as it stands right now, that is the case.
Thanks, Al. Arnie?
Do I get 30 seconds? It says a minute.
You get a full minute.
Full minute. First of all, that's not true. Our developers for years have been paying a lot of things, street improvements, sidewalk improvements, sewer improvements, water improvements, telecommunications. All those things are part of their, their contract with the city on their development. The, the thing that, that we have to remember is you want economic development, you want your kids to stay here. But if there's no jobs for them here, they're not gonna stay here. And so with the developers that, that build here, they're already required with a lot of things. And yes, we do have impact fees, particularly in the east end of the valley. The others are still under consideration, but there's not as much growth potential there. So we're trying to make sure that where we've done our impact fees, that it's impacting the areas that are actually growing and stressing the infrastructure that we have.
Thanks, Arnie. Al?
As you said, economic development is one of the core features, one of the core things that the Valley City Council needs to do. And you mentioned about jobs, which I agree with. But a lot of those jobs and a lot of those businesses that want to hire people come because of how beautiful our city is. We have seen differences in the way our city develops. If you look just on Fourth and McDonald, you can see property where an infill multifamily was built and only a piece of sidewalk just in front of their property was built. But that whole street character has changed, and I think that that should be the developer's responsibility.
Thanks, Al. Arnie?
Now you start talking about penalizing as opposed to having a good management. Yes, when we inherited the county roads and whatnot, there was very few sidewalks, particularly north or south of Sprague, except for certain areas. The fact of the matter is, is you can't put on the backs of a developer, one developer, all the sidewalks, street improvements and all the rest of it, that are going in front of the rest of your properties unless you have a way to make that more equal later. And so far, that's not the case.
Thanks, Arnie. Arnie, you're gonna lead off this next one. Last year, for the 14th year in a row, Spokane Valley opted against a 1% property tax increase. That tax would have cost the typical homeowner about $3.50 and brought the city an additional $131,000 in revenue. Are you for or against taking the 1%?
I'm never for taxes and have not promoted taxes with the exception of coming up this last two years. The 1% is costing us millions as opposed, costing the city millions in grant opportunities and whatnot, as opposed to $135,000 it will cost us this year if we were to take the 1%, which was voted on Tuesday night or not, unfortunately. I did vote for it. I voted for it last year. So what, why? First of all, we've been told by our legislators and legislators on the other side of the state that they're not gonna vote to give us grant money if we're not willing to take the, the dollars that we're allowed to already to help support our city. That's $135, $131 or whatever. The second thing, and probably even a more important thing, is the fact that our bond rating is, is the highest in the state. And if we, we continue down the path of no property tax, that's gonna get really hurt.
Thanks, Arnie. Al?
I guess my, my opponent really stated it very clearly here. Our bond rating is as high as it can be. It's the highest in the state. I don't really understand the argument that we need to take the property tax for that bond rating. I, I mean, I understand it to a point, but I guess from my perspective, given where inflation is, given where homeowners are, how they've already felt the strain of property tax through the other municipalities that tax them here in the valley, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. My, my opponent and I actually agree that taxes should follow the use. In other words, we should always have as much as possible a direct proportionment between who's using something and where the taxes go. And as much as possible, taxes shouldn't flow just into the general fund for whatever. But that being said, that's exactly what would happen with a property tax. So to me, it just doesn't make sense. If folks out there should have to tighten their belts because of inflation, well, we should have to tighten our belts too. And this is just not the time to be issuing another property tax.
Thanks, Al. Arnie, you have 30 seconds if you want it.
I probably should waive it, but I will say this, that there's, there's another really good reason why that property tax should be taken. Al, you're right that, that doesn't help those of us that are on fixed income and are trying to make ends meet. But it's about, it's less than $3. It's half that because 50% of the tax falls on corporations, businesses and elsewhere. But the fact is, we haven't taken it. Therefore, everybody else is, and we're not getting what we need for our valley.
Thanks, Arnie. Al?
I, I mean, our, our budget is in balance. We've been in balance. There are areas that we need to address, such as road and streets that are supported by a different tax, but we are in balance right now. So it's hard for me to see that. There's an argument about policing, but I think that Measure One, which is coming up right now, might solve that situation. So to me, it just doesn't make any sense. If the citizens in the future demand more services or different kinds of services from our city, then that would be a good time to evaluate a property tax. But right now is not that time.
Thank you, Al. Al, you're gonna lead off this next one. This is a question about roads. According to city staff, Spokane Valley's roads are in good shape today. But in order to keep them that way, staff say the valley will need to roughly double its annual road maintenance and preservation spending from about $8 million to about $16 million a year. The city council this week agreed to form a transportation benefit district, which could be a precursor to imposing a fee on license plate tabs. The question is, do you think the city should increase road maintenance spending? And if so, would you support a new tax or fee to come up with the needed money?
So earlier, I was talking about my qualifications. I didn't mention that I'm a government contract specialist. Government contracts expert by trade. I spent a lot of times, time in my life working for the government as a contract specialist. I think that there's a lot of money to be saved through contract regulation adjustments, through looking at how we're contracting. So I'm not convinced that we need to increase our spending, the amount that we're already spending. That being said, the amount of money that's coming in for that, that's coming in from a cable and telephone tax is decreasing. So regardless of whether we have to increase our spending, we have to increase our revenue, in particular for this road tax. So I have supported and have been supporting for many years, looking at a, a transportation district. My opponent previously wanted to do a utilities tax for that, but I'm glad that they've, that, that he's come around to this idea because I, I think it makes sense. We talked earlier about the use should fit the tax, and that just makes sense. License plates for roads. It makes sense.
Thanks, Al. Arnie?
One minute or?
You get a whole minute.
Well, first of all, utility tax was one of many options that could be utilized to help pay for roads. Particularly, the roads we're talking about are your neighborhood roads. There's no grants for that. So you've got to come up with a way by which you can go ahead and take care of those roads. Because if you wait another 10 years or another 15 years before you start it, we will never catch up with it, just like the city of Spokane. We will have their third world roads like they have, excuse me, for, for you that are from Spokane. But you know what I'm talking about. The potholes eat your tires and wheels, alignments and so on. The fact is, is that we have to come up with some program to take care of those roads. It takes $16 million. We've gone through a great deal of, of surveying and commissions and whatnot to come up with the options. Certainly, utility taxes is one, but that's not the one that we've been talking about. And it's not the only one that I've ever talked about.
Thanks, Arnie. Al, you got 30-second rebuttal if you want it.
I, I think my opponent really said it well, that, that's, that's where we are. We have to look at a way to meet the need, and that need has, it's continuing to exist. It's just that the revenue stream that previously met that need is disappearing. So to me, this is a really common sense way to do that because the folks who register cars in the valley are the folks who use those roads. It may not be the only part of the solution. We may have to look at other pieces to make sure we're encompassing parts of traffic that come from outside of the valley, but I think that this makes the most sense. So I'm glad that my opponent is doing it.
Thanks, Al. Arnie, 30 seconds if you want them.
I'll wave.
Gotcha. Arnie, this one is to you first. To all outward appearances, Spokane Valley has its own police department. In reality, the Spokane Valley Police Department is part of the Spokane County Sheriff's Office. Do you think Spokane Valley should end its contract with the, do you think Spokane Valley should end its contract with the county and form its own police department?
You know, we get a minute to answer all these different questions, and it's taken years to discuss various things. I will just simply say that the contract has worked up till now. I hope that it will continue to work under Sheriff Knowles. That does, that being said, there's gonna be a day that we're, we're gonna have to form our own police force. And the reason for that is pretty simple. Control. The control of the types of emphasis and priorities of our citizens to make sure that those things are happening. And control because that's what large cities do. And don't think for a minute that we're not a large city, folks. We are. And at some point, we're gonna need the police, our own chief, our own, own cars, which we're buying, and a lot of other things that we've already implemented. Yes, I think at some point, we're gonna be our own police force.
Al?
I mean, I, our, our contract is working excellently. We, the, when, when the valley was originally formed, one of the core principles behind the valley was setting us up as a contract city. That's because we use market forces, we use market agreements to be able to return best value for our citizens. As I said previously, I'm a contracts officer. I believe in the power of a contract. I, I guess I don't really understand how we would have more control with a chief than we would with a contract, where we're able to negotiate what the needs are that we have. I'd like to see some adjustments in the contract. I've talked to Sheriff Knowles about those adjustments. I think we could see some more output planning rather than input planning in the contract. But as it stands, right now, we don't have to face the liabilities we would have to face if we had our own department. Right now, the sheriff takes all liabilities, and that's, that's a great benefit to our city. I, I think that the sheriff is also able to plan for crimes that happen in and out of the city in a better way than we'd be able to do if we had our own contract.
Thanks, Al. Arnie, anything you want to add?
Well, the contract has worked reasonably well. There are issues with having your police force and our chief having two bosses. There are issues with having your police force and our chief having two bosses. He's paid by the county, therefore, he has to respond to the county first and foremost. And so we really don't have, if you will, a police force. We do have a contract that gives us some services, but it's not a police force that you would consider a municipal police force.
Thanks, Ernie. Al?
I guess I would disagree with that and I think that all of the deputies who work diligently here in the valley on issues that are valley issues would disagree with that as well, very strongly, in fact. I feel like they care about the valley. Our chief cares about the valley, but so does the sheriff. I mean, there's not two bosses here. The boss is the contract. We respond, we ask for the services that we need from that contract and we get those services. We also have the evaluation at the end of it. And the best part, we have an eject button if we really need to. We can form our own police department if things really fall apart.
Thank you, Al. The number of homeless people in Spokane County has more than doubled in the last decade according to the Point in Time Count, which is an annual survey required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Homelessness has increased 36% in the last year alone. In your eyes, what specifically should Spokane Valley be doing to address homelessness? And do you think the city should be spending more local taxpayer dollars on the issue? This one's to you, Al.
In terms of the total amount of funding coming for the city, I don't think that more of our local taxpayer dollars are necessary. What I do think is necessary is for us to work closer with the regional municipalities, Spokane City, Spokane County, because when we look at the amount of money being spent as a combination on a problem that really isn't one city's problem or another city's problem, it doesn't respect boundaries, you know? Homeless folks don't suddenly stop at the force field on the border. They can move in between. So to me, if we're able to really combine the total amount of resources that our county area has, we'd be able to combat this problem really, really effectively. It's, I think that we've been pulling away from that regional working group and I think some of that is because, you know, we've said that it's dysfunctional, but I'd rather fix the group because it would save taxpayers' money than say, oh, that's it. We're just going to pull out and then spend the money.
Thank you, Al. Ernie?
Well, first of all, it's not that simple. Again, this is a one-minute answer to a very intense problem. And the homelessness, first of all, before any money should be spent, is there should be expectations on what they must do if they're going to get the help. That isn't allowed to us through our Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals because they want to make housing first before anything else. And so you get your no barrier, low barrier services, which doesn't encourage, incentivize or help somebody get away from the problems that they're having with, that create the homelessness, whether that be addiction or alcoholism or a number of things, divorce, other things that have helped bring them to that point. And so it's just not that simple. As far as the regionals concerned, if it would start talking about functioning for the benefit of Spokane Valley, I'd be in a lot more favor of it.
Al?
You're right, nothing is that simple. That being said, hard work is why I'm running. This is a hard work solution. It's going to take hard work to turn that regional, that regional solution to the right direction. And that's, I'm ready to take on that hard work. When it comes to the limitations of the Boise decision, I mean, you're right, but at the same time crying over spilled milk, we can't alter that decision except through taking it to court, which I'm fully in favor of doing. But up until that point, we have to manage the situation in the cheapest way possible.
Thanks, Al. Ernie?
Managing it just means you're enabling, pure and simple. And what we need to do is change the paradigm. That's what we're trying to do in Spokane Valley with our homeless plan. It's supposedly going to be on our agenda next week for city council. We have been working on that plan for over a year. We take things slow and steady and try to get it right. And I think when it comes out, you'll see a lot different priorities on how we're going to address it.
Thank you. I am going to assume that it is time to wrap this up because I lost track of time. We're going to give you a chance to give your closing statements. Al, because you went first, you're going to go first on this one too, so that Ernie gets the last word. You can use this time to talk about something that's important to you that we haven't talked about. You can expand on something we've already talked about, whatever, whatever you want. You've got a minute. And Al, you're going to go first and Ernie, you'll get the last word.
I appreciate the dedication that my opponent has brought to the valley over the long years of his service, but I think that there's a lot of things that we differ on. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and it's hard work and I've talked about that tonight and I'm ready to undertake that hard work. I think we need a change in direction. You know, we've talked about property taxes, we've talked about homelessness and I think that I represent that change in a way that's good for our valley. My daughter lives here in the valley. I have a stake in our city moving forward and that to me is really, really important. And I think it should be important to voters when they're looking at their ballots, when they're thinking about the future of their city. I think we need common sense solutions and I think I bring those common sense solutions. So I guess I would just like to end tonight by saying thank you to Ernie for your service, but I think it's time we need a change and I'd really appreciate your support and your vote. Thanks.
Ernie?
First of all, I'd like to say that I'll put my hard work up against anybody's. That's all I know how to do and it's what I've done my whole life. I'm not going to let up because I'm 70 years old. Al's half my age. That's okay, I'm not going to hold that against him. But I want to thank the public. You've given me 12 years to serve you. I am honored. It's been a privilege. And as far as change of direction, start changing the direction from where we're going and you'll see everything that we've done in the last 12 years disappear. I think you have to stay steady, reliable and consistent and that's what I've done and common sense, that's what I'm about. I do not think inside the box. I never have thought inside the box and don't intend to start. But I want to thank you all sincerely for the opportunity to serve you and I ask you to give me one more term. That's all I'm asking and I'm done. I've lived here for 70 years.
Thanks, Ernie. And so, Ernie and Al, thank you both very much. Thank you for, thank you for being civil and playing by the rules. It makes my job easier.
Thanks, Ernie. Thank you. You did great. Thank you, Al. Really appreciate that. All right, so we have five minutes to take a little bio break, but we will start five minutes sharp, so speed that. Hello, how are you? All right, so we're going to get started with Spokane Valley City Council, Position 2. Again, Colin will be our moderator and we have Rachel Briscoe and Jessica Yeager. So thank you both so much for coming. You all behaved wonderfully. Let's just do that again.
All right, well, Jessica and Rachel, thank you for being here. First question for you, nice and broad. Why do you believe, first, I will explain that Jessica, you're going to answer this one first and in exchange, Rachel, you'll get the last word at the end. So the question for both of you, why do you believe you are qualified to be a Spokane Valley City Council member? And given that both of you are running for office for the first time, why do you want to be a Spokane Valley City Council member? Jessica, you have one minute.
Well, thanks for having us, Colin, and thanks to everyone who showed up tonight. I didn't know that we were going to have to bring our sunglasses, so this lighting up here is interesting. What I will say is that, you know, I've, I'm a fifth generation Spokane Valley girl. Been here my entire life. Each morning I look out at the mountains where Grandpa Schaefer, you know, had an icebox and a tow rope business up there. And so I really want to honor my family heritage. And also with that, I've spent the last, you know, 13 years basically playing in the WACs and RCWs, running assisted livings and memory cares at an executive level. And so, you know, when you look at safety, nursing, budgeting, activities, community, that is really what has prepared me for this role.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel?
My on, yes. I will echo the thank you for everyone who showed up and thank you Colin and the spokesman for putting this on. And Jessica, it's nice to share a stage with you. So what qualifies me for this role? Gosh, when I think about that question, it's fun because neither one of us have run for office. So what's cool for all of you is that you get to choose between two people where 100% of what we bring to the table is based on our experience and character outside of politics. So you're going to get a fresh perspective no matter what. For me, this role is really about service and leadership, hard stop. And everything that I've done in my life, those are the two things that I put at the forefront. One of the businesses that I run is the Spokane Ladies Business Community and we started that business because we saw a need in the community for women in business to have that level of support and mentorship and we wanted to offer that. I also spent the better part of a decade running residence halls and if you've never lived in a building with 418-year-olds, then you will, well, oh, shoot, I'm out of time. That minute goes fast, you guys.
Rachel, you will lead off this question. Both of you during your run for office have talked about how your top campaign priority is public safety. With as much specificity as possible, please explain what actions you believe the city council should take to improve public safety.
Great question. So, public safety is absolutely at the forefront of the citizens' minds because it's one of the top conversations that we have, that along with housing, which I'm sure we'll talk about. But as far as what to do with public safety, we have an excellent working relationship with our sheriff's office to the point where violent crime, crimes against people in the valley is actually down. And even the areas where it's not down below the previous year, it's the lowest it's been in three years. That speaks volumes to the kind of service that we're getting. And also crimes against property is a top priority for our sheriff's office and our Spokane Valley Police Department. One of the things that Sheriff Knowles and I have been talking about in excess is this concept of having more community resource officers. So having officers that are dedicated to certain neighborhoods so that they can understand those crime trends, they can build relationships with those residents and they are going to be the face of public safety to be able to build those relationships. And Sheriff Knowles and I have talked about this so much that I feel like if we can really make this happen, we're going to see really incredible results with that.
Thanks, Rachel. Jessica?
So part of, you know, my outlook on everything is, safety is utmost to everything out there. It's the pinnacle of us being able to go to the grocery store and take our kids and not think that they're going to get stolen. It's closing our eyes at night, knowing we're safe in our homes. And so that really comes down to appropriate policing, ensuring that people, when they commit crimes, are held accountable. We live in a state that isn't doing us any favors and I'm really tired of it. We let criminals right back out onto the streets and what it really comes down to is we need to work with, within the gray in our city here. It's one thing I loved about being an administrator. If a law says or a WAC says XYZ, you know, maybe find one that will fit your need elsewhere. But we need to work with our legislators on trying to change the laws here in Washington to hold criminals accountable.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel, you have 30 seconds if you'd like them.
Yeah, I would build on that. I agree with a lot of the things that she said, especially because there are some frustrating things that I've heard our own city councils say, that the state has made this decision and that has been passed down to the city level where now we get to kind of clean up the mess and figure it out. And I really have a lot of respect for the city council as they put that at the forefront. They really want to make sure that if there are things that are happening at a state level that are not serving our citizens well, that we can work ways around that. And part of that is at the judicial level.
Thank you, Rachel. Jessica?
What I will say is that when I met with Sheriff Knowles in the spring, crime was down. And about two weeks ago, all I've heard is crime is up. And everyone that I talked to at thousands of doorsteps, crime is up. So I'm going to disagree and say that crime is down because truly, it's what everyone is talking about and we're all tired of living within the confines of, will we get robbed today?
Thank you, Jessica. We're going to stay on public safety for this next one and you can lead us off. Jessica, do you think Spokane Valley should form its own police department? Or do you think the city should continue contracting with the county sheriff's office for law enforcement?
So Rachel and I were discussing, it's hard to go second because we don't want to say exactly what was said just prior to. So that's difficult to, because a lot of what we wanted to say has already been said. So just bear with us if we're repeating ourselves. But what I will say is, I know on my website that I wanted our own sheriff's department or our own police department here in the city. Are we the size of the city that can hold one, possibly? Will it? Will it cost a lot of money? Absolutely. We're already spending a lot of money on it, we have no control over it. But what I will say is that, I will hold the sheriff's department accountable to their contract. I will hold the sheriff's department accountable to what it is we're paying for. And if they cannot or will not bring the services to the citizens of the Spokane Valley to make us safe, then I will absolutely move toward getting our own department.
Thanks, Jessica. Rachel?
Yeah, from the beginning, understanding the different dynamics for having our own police department, cuz when I was first approached with this question, I thought, oh, well, tell me more about that, because I didn't really understand why we would change what we already have. And I hear what people say when they think we need to have our own police department because our city's growing, you know, crime is on the rise around the nation, around our region, and they wanna be proactive, and I absolutely understand that. One of the things, though, is that you have to look at the data, which I shared in the last question, and also the working relationship that we have. Whenever I sit down with Sheriff Knowles or Chief Ellis, they make it so crystal clear that they want absolutely what is best for Spokane Valley. We're not the second-tier people that they're serving, right? They are, we are a priority to them. And so, he's asked me this question, he says, if anyone in the valley ever wonders, you know, or he said, what is it that Spokane Valley wants that we have not delivered on? He's like, if there's anything that the valley needs, all they have to do is ask. And I think that's a working relationship that we can really work on, or continue to work with.
Thank you, Rachel. Jessica?
I'll just kinda echo the fact that the sheriff's department is doing a good job. We're waiting on this report to come out to really show us what we need, and it's not, you know, 312s, you know, it's, it's, do we need more police in this area at this time? So it's gonna be really, in particular, what it is we need to keep our citizens safe. And I think that, I think Chief Ellis said it'll be out next week, but we've heard that so often. So, I really do think that that will help patrol us and keep things safer, but I'm kind of neutral on the whole thing. I just wanna get what we're being paid, what we're paying for as citizens.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel?
Yeah, I would say at the point where we would need to bring up this conversation again, cuz we did just rescind that contract this year, and as far as things are going in the valley, you know, things are going well, there are areas where we can really clean up, like with property crime and nuisance behavior. But I would encourage the public that if there are things that you wanna see in your neighborhoods that you're not currently seeing that could be offered by our police department, come to a meeting, meet Chief Ellis, reach out to Sheriff Knowles, they wanna hear that from you.
Thank you. Last year, for the 14th year in a row, Spokane Valley opted against a 1% property tax increase. That tax would've cost the typical homeowner about $3.50 and brought the city an additional $131,000 in revenue. Are you for or against taking the 1%? And you're gonna lead us off on this one, Rachel.
When it comes to taxes, there are three things that I always consider. Taxes should be a last resort. Why do we need this tax? What's it for? And then, we should be able to show that we've been good stewards with what we already have. One of the things I love about the valley is, we have shown time and time again that the council has done a great job with what the taxpayers have been paying. We've, I don't even know how many years in a row we've had clean audits, but we just celebrated another one. Chelsea Taylor and her team do an incredible job, the council, current council, very focused on being fiscally responsible. And it's one of the things I brag about whenever people ask me about my city. So I would say we're checking that box for sure. But when it comes to a property tax, I would, as a citizen, I would wanna know what exactly is this going for? And, is this the last resort? Have we creatively thought of other ways that we could come up with whatever money that we need for this thing? And a property tax is absolutely what the next option is.
Thank you, Rachel. Jessica?
I would echo a lot of what Rachel said. You know, I work with seniors who are all on a fixed income. Quite frankly, all of us in this room are on a fixed income. We really need to make sure that we keep our good bond rating in the valley. We need to make sure that taxes are a last resort, and that we're not pricing people to the point, especially our seniors, where they can't afford their food, medications, that kinda stuff. So, we need to look out for the vulnerable populations anytime it comes, anytime it comes down to taxes. A lot of us really can find an extra dollar or two in our budget per year. A lot of us waste a lot of money at the grocery store on things we throw away or don't eat, whatnot. I'm terrible about that. But what I will say is that, raising taxes is a last resort. I really think that we could be taking that, and over the last 10 years, it would've, you know, bought a lot of police officers.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
30 seconds if you want them.
That's okay.
Okay. Jessica, this one you will take first, and it's addressed to you anyway, which is convenient for me. Jessica, you attended a Christian rock concert a few months ago in downtown Spokane, and appeared onstage alongside former State Representative Matt Shea, who was ousted from the House Republican Caucus in 2019 after an independent investigation determined he committed an act of domestic terrorism by helping plan the armed takeover of the Malheur National Wildlife Refuge in 2016. Shea continues to have influence over Spokane Valley politics. Please explain your thoughts on Shea's views.
I believe you and I had this conversation, Colin, and I don't really know how long you guys are gonna beat this dead horse, really. I don't know Matt Shea. And I also would like to find out what is so wrong about praying for our city.
You can stop there if you'd like.
I'll stop there.
Rachel?
What's the question for me?
Question for you. Shea continues to have influence over Spokane Valley politics. Please explain your thoughts on Shea's views.
I don't know him. I understand that there's a lot of people who have been hurt by him, and I don't wanna diminish that, but I personally have never met him. I don't believe I've been influenced by his views. If I have, I'm unaware of it. And one thing that I will say is, when all this first happened, even though that part was towards Jessica, I'm gonna respond to that anyway, when all this first happened, I had several people ask me if I was going to use this against my opponent, and my answer was no. Because, one, I didn't understand the circumstance, but also, I didn't see anything wrong with praying on a stage. So I reached out to some of my friends who were there, who are from Idaho, have no vested interest in valley politics, and they, I attend Bible study with these women, these women are basically my surrogate grandparents. And I asked them, what was your take on what happened? And they had no idea why it was such a big deal. And I would just encourage all of us to move on.
Would you like to use your rebuttal, Jessica?
I would encourage all of us to move on.
Would you like to use your rebuttal, Rachel?
Nope.
Alrighty. This next question is about roads, and you're gonna lead us off, Rachel. According to city staff, Spokane Valley's roads are in good shape, but in order to keep them that way, staff say the valley will need to roughly double annual road maintenance and preservation spending from about $8 million a year to about $16 million a year. The city council this week agreed to form a transportation benefit district, which could be a precursor to imposing a fee on license plate tabs. The question is, do you think the city should increase road maintenance spending? And if so, would you support a new tax or fee to come up with the needed money?
So, just to reiterate, I would support a new tax or fee if that's what was necessary, because part of what we provide as city council, which was so greatly laid out in the last debate, was public safety, infrastructure, and economics, like those are our focal points. And so, if our infrastructure needs our support, and we're not able to do so with what we currently have, then we need to look at other options, and I do believe that that is a viable option. One thing I will say is, the valley has done an incredible job with grant money and rolling over a surplus to be able to fund these projects. But what was said at one of the most recent meetings is that they're operating at a deficit every year. I don't know how many years, I don't wanna, I don't wanna misquote, but operating at a deficit for our roads, and our roads are in great shape. So we wanna keep them that way, right? We wanna keep our pavement condition index at good levels. So I would say, if that was where we needed to go next in order to maintain the great roads that we have and continue to upgrade, then I would be on board with that, but it would need to be a last resort.
Jessica?
So, I work in my car a lot, as I work in the field for what I do professionally now. And there's a lot of people who aren't paying their tabs, they're expired, we got during COVID, I think you didn't have to pay your tab fees or something. I could be off because I am in the medical field, and so COVID was pretty chaotic in that field. But, I would more support a sales tax increase than anything if we had to, because visitors come from around the region to utilize our roads, and we need to make sure that we're all spreading that around. I would also like to go after the people who haven't paid their tab fees yet. That could make an increase and a difference in our budget. We need to make sure that we maintain what we have, because it's very costly to repair once it's broken.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel, you have 30 seconds if you want them.
I, actually no, I don't wanna just repeat myself for the sake of repeating myself, I'll pass.
Would you like to use an extra 30 seconds, Jessica?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. This question is about homelessness, and you will take the lead, Jessica. Spokane Valley has historically had a more hands-off approach to addressing homelessness than the city of Spokane. Today, the valley continues to lack homeless shelters, although there will soon be a few beds made available for homeless families. Do you think Spokane Valley should have more homeless sheltered beds?
Like Arnie said, this is a really complex issue for a one-minute answer, but what I will say is, similar to crime, homelessness is a multifaceted approach where we need to offer compassionate care to those who want it. It may mean that they have to detox unwanted for a little while at a medical treatment facility, and then encourage them to get clean and move on and take their medications. But, I do not support housing first. If any of you have driven downtown on like Second and Division or somewhere, it's terrifying. Catholic Charities has made a mess out of that area. I have brought programs to some of the council members already that show high efficacy, they have great results, and so I look forward to actually working on that and continuing the work that I've been doing.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel?
One of the ways that I've been looking at homelessness, just to be able to give a picture of how my thought process is, if you have a leaky pipe and it floods your basement, you're gonna clean up the water, but you're also gonna fix the leak. And I think that we've spent so much time as a region talking about cleaning up the water, and not enough time about how can we fix the leak. And that's where we talk about more preventative measures, right? Preventative, preventing homelessness from even happening, or working with people and organizations who have incredible success rates. We have some organizations in our area like Family Promise and Spokane Valley Partners, they're doing incredible work and their success rates are astounding. If you're not familiar with these organizations, I highly recommend that you reach out. In fact, Family Promise is doing an open house, I believe, next week, where you can go around and tour and understand what they do. But, but seeing their success rate, I wanna say it's like 95% of the families that they work with are housed after two years. Guys, that's incredible. So why aren't we asking them what we should be doing next?
Thank you, Rachel. Jessica, anything you'd like to add?
I do, but I forgot what I was gonna say, cuz I was listening to Rachel. So, um, oh darn, I'm so sorry, I thought it was pretty good.
You want me to say the question again?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add, Rachel?
Yes, and I'm happy to give Jessica her 30 seconds back if she remembers. But what I was gonna finish saying is, I, when I think of shelter beds, I hesitate, and I think that the valley council's done a great job of being really, like, it was said earlier, slow and steady when it comes to even this regional effort, because they want questions answered so that we know that the money and the time and energy we're gonna be pouring into this is actually going to work, and not just continue to clean up the water, because guess what's gonna happen if the pipe isn't fixed? It's just gonna keep getting wet.
I remembered what I was gonna say.
Go ahead.
It is about the regional approach, so I'm not sure if you were gonna ask that, so I'm sorry if I'm jumping ahead. But, what I will say is, I was really excited about a regional approach because it does bleed around. People are transient, that's kind of what we call homeless people sometimes. And, and the further along we got on it, the more I went, wait a minute, they're gonna take a bunch of money, we have no control. And so, that's why I started working really hard to come up with other solutions, because I don't believe that a regional approach is the way that it's gonna be working.
Thank you. Rachel, you can lead this one off. Unlike many cities, people in Spokane Valley who wanna go to the library, seems same as any other library, but it's part of a county-wide library system. Would you be supportive of continuing in that system, or would you have any interest in the valley going its own way when it comes to libraries? You can lead us off, Rachel.
Well, one of the things you can count on me, as your elected official, is I will always be honest with you, I have not thought about this. This is not something that I've given a lot of thought to. My initial response is, I love the library that we just opened up this summer here in the valley, my kids and I go there a lot, and I see no issue with that approach, but my next step will be, now that this question's been answered, and I don't have an answer, or been asked and I don't have an answer to it, my next step is gonna be calling a few people that I have in mind right now to say, hey, how would you answer this? And what do you think about this? Cuz you guys, I'm not gonna pretend that I have all the answers, I don't. We literally do not have all the answers. But I know a lot of incredible people that I can ask the questions to, to get the answers that I need.
Jessica?
I didn't anticipate a library question either, but I'm not sure how we would wanna necessarily break off of this system, it seems to be working rather well. And I've talked to thousands of people on their doorsteps, and no one has complaints about it. Everyone seems to think that things are going in the right direction. What we do really need to work on is homelessness, crime, and addiction.
Thank you. Jessica, you can lead this one off. Do you think Spokane Valley should have term limits for city council members? And if so, how long do you think a city council member should be allowed to serve? And Jessica, you can lead this one off.
So, practice makes permanent. It's not perfect. I think that if things are going really well, then why would someone then step away? I also think that, especially higher up, if you look at people like Nancy Pelosi, there's absolutely reasons for term limits. So, for me, I'm kind of on the border of them. I think at each stage of our government, we should have a designated number for term limits.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, this is a fun question to answer in front of current council members. Love you guys so much. I, you know, my answer to this, though, is, I see the merit of a term limit, and I think there's lots of examples of people in politics who we would all love to put a term limit on. But really, the first thing I thought of was, I wanna put this back on the citizens, do your research. And if there's someone who's been in office for a long period of time, and they're no longer serving and adding value to the community, you don't have to vote for them. You can support the other candidate, you can do your part. I think that term limits may have a place in other forms of office, but I also understand that at a city level, we have an opportunity to be more locally involved and engaged, and one of my visions for being in office is to have more civic engagement, where the citizens are holding us accountable, and we're adding value to them because we actually understand what they need. And I think if we had more civic engagement, we wouldn't necessarily need term limits.
Thank you. Jessica, is there anything you'd wanna add?
Yeah, I think that, when we look at the term limits, I do like the idea of people getting more involved, which is one of the reasons I got involved myself. And, really making sure that we are here to represent the public, the citizens of the Spokane Valley, that is the utmost goal in this position. And local politics is really important. So, if it works for the people, then that's what I would be behind.
Thank you. Rachel?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, I think it's about time to wrap it up, so I'm gonna give you a chance to make your closing statements. Jessica, you went first, you're gonna go first again so that Rachel gets the last word. And again, you get a minute, can talk about something we didn't talk about that's important to you, you can talk more about something we've already talked about, the minute is yours.
Well, I think, the only thing we really didn't talk about was the free market, but I will say that smaller government, to me, is better, less regulations is better, and going off of supply and demand is really important to me. I have worked in executive leadership roles for many years now, and I would ask for your vote because I'm the person that is going to put citizens first, their safety first. And, my history in the WACs and RCWs, writing policy and procedure, really, really put me ahead, I believe, in this, in this race. Rachel is lovely, and we've had a couple of great conversations, and so, I really think that for all of you, you guys really do have a tough choice up here, but I do believe that with my leadership history, that puts me a little bit in the forefront of your minds. And I'm ready to go up against Olympia and start demanding better for our residents.
Thank you, Jessica. Rachel?
Thank you, Jessica. One of my favorite quotes is a St. Augustine quote, it goes, "In essentials, unity..." One of my favorite quotes is a St. Augustine quote, it goes, "In essentials, unity; in non-essentials, liberty; and in all things, charity." And if I could sum up my character, my, my person, who you can expect of me when I show up as your elected official, it would be those things. I believe in finding unity in things that are essential for all of us, which would be those things at city council, those main roles that we talked about, in non-essentials, liberty. We have incredible rights and liberties in this country that we should be defending for our neighbors, even if we don't agree with them. And in all things, charity. I just think we could all take a couple of extra steps toward being more decent towards each other, and we would see an incredible shift in how things are going. And we can start here in the valley. I know things at the state level and at the national level are a little bit of a dumpster fire right now, but you guys, the valley is an incredible place to live and raise kids. Jessica and I are both moms raising kids in this city, and we really care about it. And so one thing I want to leave you with is a promise, that I am a woman of my word, I work hard and I care a lot, and what you can expect from me is integrity, even when it's hard, and what I expect from you is accountability and engagement.
And that's all we've got. Thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, that was really good.
Yeah, that was really good.[32.72][32.72](APPLAUSE)[33.22][33.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[33.72][33.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[34.22][34.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[34.72][34.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[35.22][35.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[35.72][35.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[36.22][36.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[36.72][36.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[37.22][37.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[37.72][37.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[38.22][38.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[38.72][38.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[39.22][39.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[39.72][39.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[40.22][40.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[40.72][40.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[41.22][41.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[41.72][41.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[42.22][42.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[42.72][42.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[43.22][43.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[43.72][43.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[44.22][44.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[44.72][44.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[45.22][45.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[45.72][45.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[46.22][46.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[46.72][46.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[47.22][47.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[47.72][47.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[48.22][48.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[48.72][48.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[49.22][49.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[49.72][49.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[50.22][50.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[50.72][50.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[51.22][51.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[51.72][51.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[52.22][52.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[52.72][52.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[53.22][53.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[53.72][53.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[54.22][54.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[54.72][54.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[55.22][55.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[55.72][55.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[56.22][56.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[56.72][56.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[57.22][57.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[57.72][57.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[58.22][58.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[58.72][58.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[59.22][59.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[59.72][59.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[60.22][60.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[60.72][60.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[61.22][61.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[61.72][61.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[62.22][62.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[62.72][62.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[63.22][63.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[63.72][63.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[64.22][64.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[64.72][64.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[65.22][65.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[65.72][65.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[66.22][66.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[66.72][66.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[67.22][67.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[67.72][67.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[68.22][68.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[68.72][68.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[69.22][69.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[69.72][69.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[70.22][70.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[70.72][70.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[71.22][71.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[71.72][71.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[72.22][72.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[72.72][72.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[73.22][73.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[73.72][73.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[74.22][74.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[74.72][74.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[75.22][75.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[75.72][75.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[76.22][76.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[76.72][76.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[77.22][77.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[77.72][77.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[78.22][78.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[78.72][78.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[79.22][79.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[79.72][79.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[80.22][80.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[80.72][80.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[81.22][81.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[81.72][81.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[82.22][82.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[82.72][82.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[83.22][83.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[83.72][83.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[84.22][84.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[84.72][84.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[85.22][85.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[85.72][85.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[86.22][86.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[86.72][86.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[87.22][87.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[87.72][87.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[88.22][88.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[88.72][88.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[89.22][89.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[89.72][89.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[90.22][90.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[90.72][90.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[91.22][91.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[91.72][91.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[92.22][92.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[92.72][92.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[93.22][93.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[93.72][93.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[94.22][94.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[94.72][94.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[95.22][95.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[95.72][95.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[96.22][96.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[96.72][96.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[97.22][97.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[97.72][97.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[98.22][98.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[98.72][98.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[99.22][99.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[99.72][99.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[100.22][100.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[100.72][100.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[101.22][101.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[101.72][101.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[102.22][102.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[102.72][102.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[103.22][103.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[103.72][103.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[104.22][104.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[104.72][104.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[105.22][105.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[105.72][105.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[106.22][106.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[106.72][106.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[107.22][107.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[107.72][107.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[108.22][108.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[108.72][108.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[109.22][109.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[109.72][109.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[110.22][110.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[110.72][110.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[111.22][111.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[111.72][111.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[112.22][112.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[112.72][112.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[113.22][113.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[113.72][113.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[114.22][114.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[114.72][114.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[115.22][115.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[115.72][115.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[116.22][116.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[116.72][116.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[117.22][117.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[117.72][117.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[118.22][118.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[118.72][118.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[119.22][119.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[119.72][119.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[120.22][120.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[120.72][120.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[121.22][121.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[121.72][121.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[122.22][122.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[122.72][122.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[123.22][123.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[123.72][123.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[124.22][124.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[124.72][124.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[125.22][125.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[125.72][125.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[126.22][126.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[126.72][126.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[127.22][127.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[127.72][127.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[128.22][128.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[128.72][128.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[129.22][129.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[129.72][129.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[130.22][130.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[130.72][130.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[131.22][131.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[131.72][131.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[132.22][132.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[132.72][132.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[133.22][133.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[133.72][133.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[134.22][134.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[134.72][134.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[135.22][135.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[135.72][135.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[136.22][136.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[136.72][136.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[137.22][137.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[137.72][137.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[138.22][138.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[138.72][138.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[139.22][139.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[139.72][139.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[140.22][140.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[140.72][140.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[141.22][141.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[141.72][141.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[142.22][142.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[142.72][142.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[143.22][143.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[143.72][143.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[144.22][144.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[144.72][144.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[145.22][145.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[145.72][145.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[146.22][146.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[146.72][146.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[147.22][147.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[147.72][147.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[148.22][148.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[148.72][148.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[149.22][149.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[149.72][149.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[150.22][150.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[150.72][150.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[151.22][151.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[151.72][151.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[152.22][152.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[152.72][152.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[153.22][153.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[153.72][153.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[154.22][154.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[154.72][154.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[155.22][155.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[155.72][155.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[156.22][156.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[156.72][156.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[157.22][157.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[157.72][157.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[158.22][158.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[158.72][158.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[159.22][159.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[159.72][159.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[160.22][160.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[160.72][160.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[161.22][161.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[161.72][161.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[162.22][162.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[162.72][162.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[163.22][163.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[163.72][163.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[164.22][164.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[164.72][164.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[165.22][165.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[165.72][165.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[166.22][166.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[166.72][166.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[167.22][167.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[167.72][167.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[168.22][168.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[168.72][168.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[169.22][169.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[169.72][169.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[170.22][170.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[170.72][170.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[171.22][171.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[171.72][171.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[172.22][172.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[172.72][172.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[173.22][173.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[173.72][173.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[174.22][174.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[174.72][174.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[175.22][175.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[175.72][175.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[176.22][176.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[176.72][176.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[177.22][177.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[177.72][177.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[178.22][178.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[178.72][178.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[179.22][179.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[179.72][179.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[180.22][180.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[180.72][180.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[181.22][181.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[181.72][181.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[182.22][182.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[182.72][182.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[183.22][183.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[183.72][183.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[184.22][184.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[184.72][184.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[185.22][185.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[185.72][185.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[186.22][186.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[186.72][186.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[187.22][187.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[187.72][187.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[188.22][188.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[188.72][188.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[189.22][189.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[189.72][189.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[190.22][190.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[190.72][190.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[191.22][191.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[191.72][191.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[192.22][192.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[192.72][192.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[193.22][193.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[193.72][193.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[194.22][194.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[194.72][194.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[195.22][195.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[195.72][195.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[196.22][196.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[196.72][196.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[197.22][197.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[197.72][197.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[198.22][198.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[198.72][198.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[199.22][199.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[199.72][199.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[200.22][200.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[200.72][200.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[201.22][201.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[201.72][201.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[202.22][202.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[202.72][202.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[203.22][203.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[203.72][203.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[204.22][204.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[204.72][204.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[205.22][205.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[205.72][205.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[206.22][206.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[206.72][206.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[207.22][207.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[207.72][207.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[208.22][208.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[208.72][208.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[209.22][209.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[209.72][209.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[210.22][210.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[210.72][210.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[211.22][211.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[211.72][211.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[212.22][212.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[212.72][212.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[213.22][213.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[213.72][213.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[214.22][214.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[214.72][214.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[215.22][215.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[215.72][215.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[216.22][216.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[216.72][216.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[217.22][217.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[217.72][217.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[218.22][218.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[218.72][218.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[219.22][219.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[219.72][219.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[220.22][220.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[220.72][220.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[221.22][221.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[221.72][221.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[222.22][222.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[222.72][222.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[223.22][223.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[223.72][223.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[224.22][224.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[224.72][224.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[225.22][225.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[225.72][225.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[226.22][226.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[226.72][226.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[227.22][227.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[227.72][227.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[228.22][228.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[228.72][228.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[229.22][229.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[229.72][229.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[230.22][230.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[230.72][230.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[231.22][231.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[231.72][231.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[232.22][232.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[232.72][232.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[233.22][233.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[233.72][233.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[234.22][234.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[234.72][234.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[235.22][235.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[235.72][235.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[236.22][236.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[236.72][236.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[237.22][237.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[237.72][237.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[238.22][238.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[238.72][238.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[239.22][239.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[239.72][239.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[240.22][240.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[240.72][240.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[241.22][241.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[241.72][241.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[242.22][242.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[242.72][242.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[243.22][243.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[243.72][243.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[244.22][244.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[244.72][244.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[245.22][245.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[245.72][245.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[246.22][246.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[246.72][246.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[247.22][247.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[247.72][247.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[248.22][248.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[248.72][248.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[249.22][249.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[249.72][249.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[250.22][250.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[250.72][250.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[251.22][251.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[251.72][251.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[252.22][252.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[252.72][252.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[253.22][253.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[253.72][253.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[254.22][254.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[254.72][254.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[255.22][255.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[255.72][255.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[256.22][256.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[256.72][256.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[257.22][257.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[257.72][257.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[258.22][258.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[258.72][258.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[259.22][259.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[259.72][259.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[260.22][260.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[260.72][260.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[261.22][261.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[261.72][261.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[262.22][262.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[262.72][262.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[263.22][263.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[263.72][263.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[264.22][264.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[264.72][264.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[265.22][265.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[265.72][265.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[266.22][266.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[266.72][266.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[267.22][267.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[267.72][267.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[268.22][268.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[268.72][268.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[269.22][269.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[269.72][269.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[270.22][270.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[270.72][270.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[271.22][271.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[271.72][271.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[272.22][272.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[272.72][272.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[273.22][273.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[273.72][273.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[274.22][274.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[274.72][274.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[275.22][275.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[275.72][275.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[276.22][276.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[276.72][276.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[277.22][277.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[277.72][277.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[278.22][278.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[278.72][278.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[279.22][279.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[279.72][279.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[280.22][280.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[280.72][280.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[281.22][281.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[281.72][281.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[282.22][282.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[282.72][282.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[283.22][283.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[283.72][283.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[284.22][284.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[284.72][284.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[285.22][285.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[285.72][285.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[286.22][286.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[286.72][286.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[287.22][287.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[287.72][287.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[288.22][288.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[288.72][288.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[289.22][289.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[289.72][289.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[290.22][290.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[290.72][290.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[291.22][291.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[291.72][291.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[292.22][292.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[292.72][292.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[293.22][293.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[293.72][293.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[294.22][294.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[294.72][294.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[295.22][295.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[295.72][295.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[296.22][296.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[296.72][296.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[297.22][297.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[297.72][297.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[298.22][298.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[298.72][298.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[299.22][299.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[299.72][299.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[300.22][300.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[300.72][300.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[301.22][301.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[301.72][301.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[302.22][302.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[302.72][302.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[303.22][303.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[303.72][303.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[304.22][304.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[304.72][304.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[305.22][305.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[305.72][305.72](END OF TRANSCRIPT)[306.22][306.22](END OF TRANSCRIPT)
And we have Tim Hamburg and Rob Chase. So let's get started. Thank you.
All right, I have written in a lot of red pen on these notes, so if I stumble, I apologize.
Are these on?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't.
I think you're okay. Someone will holler if you need help. We have done a coin flip already. Rob, you are going to go first, and Tim, you'll get the last word. The first question for you guys. Why do you believe you're qualified to be a Spokane Valley City Council member?
I believe I'm qualified because I have--
Sounds like your mic-- we do have to fix your mic, I think. You were right.
Well, that's what I figured.
Things were right. So I believe I will make a good councilman because I have a lot of experience in county government. I was county treasurer for eight years, and I was a legislator for two years. And I think I can bring that to the table because I know all the players, you know, at the county and in the state of Washington, too, and how municipal government fits with the other, even federal government. I ran for Congress twice, too. So doing that, you try to bone up on a lot of things. I'm a reader, and in fact, I share my books, my favorite books, with my opponent, too. We talk about libraries, and we think libraries are a good idea. You know, the Tenth Amendment says anything not in the federal constitution belongs to states, the people. I think libraries are good for the public, too. But also, I think that I'm good at common cause efforts, so I've worked with people on both sides of the party to get a lot of good things done in my career.
Thank you, Rob. Tim?
Yes, I grew up in the Valley, and I ended up going to Center Valley School District as a student, graduated from Center Valley, went to Washington State, got my degree in education, and came back to the Valley and taught and worked for the Center Valley School District for 25 years as a teacher, coach, and athletic director. So I dealt with multimillion-dollar budgets, worked with the community. When I retired from there, I was actually approached by the law enforcement museum people to write, help do research for the history of the Spokane Police Department. So I have an affinity for law enforcement. I then went from there to the library board itself for 10 years, got a lot more information and knowledge and experience, again, dealing with multimillion-dollar budgets. One of the reasons we have a new library in the Valley was because it took 11 years to get there, but that library was built without a single penny increase in taxes to the taxpayers. It was self-bonded. So I'm really proud of that. I think that gives me, I know that gives me the experience to continue on and seek another term at this.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, you will go first on this question. Both of you have been elected officials before, but oftentimes, when someone is running for local office for the first time, it can be hard to understand what the responsibilities of a city council truly are. In your eyes, what do you believe are the city council's fundamental responsibilities? What sort of issues should the city council avoid getting involved in?
And in deference to the other questions that I met, these that we responded to quite a few times earlier on, and all the things we need to provide have been mentioned, but I think what I, why I want to say from my own perspective is you're working for your community, you're working for all the citizens. It's a nonpartisan situation. I would have not sought this office if it was partisan. There's too many extremes, I believe, on both sides, and there are so many things that are important to the city management, how you run a city, how you provide police protection, how you provide the infrastructure that is needed on a daily basis, and respond to people, regardless such as homelessness and things like that. It takes a lot of teamwork. And actually, in my first four, two years on the council, I was reminded by a reporter that we voted almost over 90% of the time alike throughout our council meetings. It's mostly about budgeting and being good stewards of our budget and managing the services that are provided to our citizens.
Thank you, Tim. Rob, anything you'd like to add?
Well--
I'm sorry. You have a full minute. I apologize.
Okay. Yeah, when you come to a new position, you know, you're bringing who you are to that position with your experience and whatever, you know, wisdom is up there, and that's what people have to look at. You know, I don't know the particularities. I don't know what wither room we have at the Valley City Council, but, you know, I will learn that, and I will work with my peers on that council, too. And you learn pretty quickly what you can do with all the expert witnesses that come up and talking to everybody. In fact, today, my neighbor, Maurice Smith, he was in charge of Camp Hope, and he has just written a book about it, and he gave it to me yesterday, and I've already read about 60 pages of it. So, you know, I'm a reader and a researcher, and I can get on board pretty quickly.
Thank you. Tim?
I'd also like to add probably the most valuable experience and one I've enjoyed the most was with working with the staff. It's amazing what the staff does behind the scenes that isn't in the news, isn't in the paper, people don't talk about in public. And I learned a long time ago from my master teacher, who was a student teaching, best thing to do is when your students ask you a question, if you don't know the answer, it's okay. You go to the experts that do. I'm not a traffic engineer. I ask the traffic engineer about their road situations, what we need to do, and the entire staff does an excellent job.
Thank you, Tim. Rob, you've got a rebuttal if you'd like to use it.
Well, when I was elected county treasurer, I ran for county treasurer. I talked to a couple of county commissioners, and I said, well, what does a county treasurer do? They didn't know. You don't know till you're in there. But I did ask, you know, my operations management degree helped me a lot. You're finding efficiencies and shop floor control, and no one had really asked the 30 people that worked there before what they thought about things. So Mike Volz and I formed teams, and we got a lot of problems solved, you know, because we had centuries of experience with those people, and you do it the city, too, so it's using the same rationale.
Thank you, Rob. Rob, you are going to go first on this one, and this is a public safety question. With as much specificity as possible, please explain what actions you believe the city council should take to improve public safety.
Well, one of the big ones that's looming over us now is Measure One. You know, do we need a new jail? And when I was county treasurer, I assigned the bond issue for the emergency 9/11 measure that had passed. And, but a lot of people had questions on it, so I said, can I see the executive summary? Well, there was no executive summary, so I said, well, can you make one up? It should only take a few days to have an executive summary in business and in government. That's one of the things that's necessary for a project. In eight years, I never got an executive summary. You know, I went to the sheriff, I went to the Board of County Commissioners, I went to the emergency 9/11 people, and I went to the CEO of the county. In eight years, I didn't get an answer. And I went to the press. The press didn't seem very interested, except for Larry Shook, who, when we started to work on it, he had about a PTSD from Vietnam. So I think that's why I'm against Measure One when it comes up. It needs more transparency.
Thank you, Rob. Tim?
Well, one thing we've done very well in public safety is we are going to be adding officers. They're needed. The 2024 budget, we've allowed for that. It's just a matter of how many and where they're going to be slotted, what category, where they're needed. That actually comes up on November 6. We have a meeting that is open to the public at City Hall. I believe it starts at 1:00 in the afternoon, and finalizing the contract and meeting with the police department and their needs for the local city police. We've also added a officer on the streets out in the community with our housing homeless coordinator and his team. We're looking at adding another officer. Since Camp Hope closed, it's getting a little more tenuous out there for our housing and homeless team because the people that came from Camp Hope, left that area, were the ones that didn't want to leave there anyway, so they're a lot more difficult to deal with. So we're doing whatever we can with the police department to make it easier for them and add additional officers.
Thank you, Tim. Rob?
No, unlike Tim, I'll listen to the sheriff, I'll listen to, let's see, the police chief, Ellis, and all the experts that I can, then make an informed decision.
You have a 30-second rebuttal if you'd like it, Tim.
Oh, no, thank you.
All right. Tim, you're going to be the leader on this one here. Last year, for the 14th year in a row, Spokane Valley opted against a 1% property tax increase. That tax would have cost the typical homeowner about $3.50 and brought the city an additional $131,000 in revenue. Are you in favor of or opposed to taking the 1%?
Well, the first two years as on council, I opposed it. This year, I voted in favor of it for the main reason of what I just spoke of in the previous question. That would have paid for a police officer. We need more police officers. It would be $3.80 on a homeowner of a $400,000 home, so it's actually going to be less for many. Seniors on fixed income would get a lower rate as they do on county tax situation. But I think if we start looking at, if we've been saying no for all these years, the hundreds of thousands were not taking, there is inflation that not only hits their citizens, it hits city services. And if we get too far behind and we are not adding officers, we're not going to be able to catch up.
Thank you, Tim. Rob?
I would vote against it because I'm sure the cities like the county, if you don't use it, it goes into a bank that you could pull it out later. So I thought the best trio of commissioners we had were Phil Harris, Kate McCaslin, and John Ross Kelly, and they didn't take it for several years. So once we had a recession in 2008, then those commissioners were able to raise it, you know, use 7% that they'd built up over the years to meet that, the contingencies of that, and also to, you know, the union cooperated, the county unions, and they limited their people to 36 hours a week, and yet they found efficiencies to fill in the rest, so we got through that tough, tough time.
Thank you, Rob. Tim, would you like to use your rebuttal?
You know, I just want to remind people that I would not support it unless it specifically went to police usage, not to the general fund itself. So it would be identified for that purpose only.
Rob?
No, I'm fine.
Road question. According to city staff, Spokane Valley's roads are in good shape, but in order to keep them that way, the valley will need to roughly double its annual road maintenance and preservation spending from approximately $8 million a year to $16 million a year. The city council this week agreed to form a transportation benefit district, which could be a precursor to imposing a fee on license plate tabs. The question, and Rob, you can go first, is do you think the city should increase road maintenance spending? And if so, would you support a new tax or fee to come up with the money?
Not on license tabs. That was my very first political involvement. That's when I first met Mike Fagan and Tim Iman's measure to put that as an initiative. And I went out and gathered signatures. And for me at that time, you know, it was tough to make 12 car payments annually. The license tab tax was like a 13th car payment, you know, if you're, you know, living paycheck to paycheck. It was kind of tough to pay that. Plus, it wasn't really used for roads, as I recall. It went to all kinds of different places. So I would, on principle, be against that.
Thank you, Rob. Tim?
Well, I agree with Rob on that. I would go, I'd lean toward a sales tax. It's spread out more. There's people that work here and come here on a daily basis from Idaho, for example, and have lunch and whatever, and they spend money here. That'd be 1/10th of the 1% sales tax. Also, the license tabs fee, I agree with. It's hard enough for young families to, you haven't owned one vehicle, plus, you know, get tabs for that and then look at the option to have it, to have another tab fee. So they'd be the only paid, or citizens would be the only one paid it. And our citizens are not the only ones that use our roads. And we, through research, we found that 48% of the sales taxes would be generated from people outside of the city. So I think that's a much more fair way to go.
Thank you, Tim. Rob, anything you'd like to add?
Well, the power to tax is the power to destroy, so you got to make sure if you have to raise a tax, that it's going to be adding value and not waste.
Tim, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I'd just like to remind the people that this tax has not changed since 2003. It was on the roads, the initial one. It was a landline tax. And we don't have to ask everybody to raise their hands, or anything I can't see anyway, but about how many people, if you have landlines to your children and grandchildren. So that's the fee. We just, it just goes down. We're taking out of reserves. It was mentioned earlier by an individual that we can't continue to do that and maintain the quality of the roads we have, which are very, very good.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, you will go first on this one. To all outward appearances, Spokane Valley has its own police department, but in reality, Spokane Valley Police Department is part of the Spokane County Sheriff's Office. Do you think Spokane Valley should continue its contract with the county, or should the city form its own police department?
We should stay with the county. I believe in local, regional collaboration. They do an excellent job. It's also been pointed out earlier, we're contract with them. We review it every three years, or renew it, excuse me. We can ask to circumvent that. We don't have to wait three years if there's a situation where we can't work with them, but I don't see any reason why we can't. You know, you look at other large cities, you know, 500, 600,000 population, they have one police department. And to spend $4 to $7 million, by the way, is what it would cost to start up your own police department. That doesn't count recruiting. That doesn't count, do we want to have our own prosecutor or need one? Do we need to then talk about having our own jail? I think if it works well, we need to stay with it, and it does work very well.
Thank you, Tim. Rob?
Well, I would have to talk to Sheriff Knowles and the people, you know, that are in that. Philosophically, I like decentralization because it supports the principle of subsidiarity. I mean, the best decisions are made as local as possible, and so I would just have to listen to all sides. I know with the contract, we probably have quantities of savings, quantities of scale that are involved, too, so you don't want to put any extra burdens on the taxpayers, but also decentralization is something else. So it's one of those things, you can see both sides, and as I, as I am there longer and talk to expert people, I'll have a better decision to make.
Thank you, Rob. Tim, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Rob?
No.
This question is about homelessness. The number of homeless people in Spokane County has more than doubled in the last decade, according to the point-in-time count, an annual survey required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Homelessness has increased 36% in the last year alone. In your eyes, what specifically should Spokane Valley be doing to address homelessness? Should the city be spending more local taxpayer dollars on the issue? And Rob, you can go first.
Maurice Smith's book, it's called A Place to Exist. You know, these people have to exist somewhere. I think we do have overflow from the city of Spokane that is sort of, you know, encroached upon the valley itself because they did have no place to go, you know, and a lot of it's very, very sad stories. I remember until the 1980s, I never saw anybody in Spokane County with a cardboard sign saying, please feed me, or, you know, throw me some money. So I think it had a lot to do with cutbacks in mental health, but also fentanyl and the other drugs that are rampant now, and the loss of American values. I'm part of the Spokane Father Institute Initiative, rather, and we helped, 90% of the guys in jail had no father figure. So we try to provide advice to these younger men who suddenly what they want to change, stop the generational curse that they're under, and take care of the responsibility for their children, and hopefully get visiting rights or maybe even custody.
Thank you, Rob. Tim?
And I appreciate your comments, Rob. I was at a ribbon cutting last week for a cross block. And, well, actually, it was a groundbreaking for a shelter that's going to open this spring for youth. It is located near SEC. There's a CHAZ clinic going to be in the same lot with it, so it's right next to it. Then, we had a ribbon cutting across the street for young adults, 18 to 24, for cross block. It is a shelter that has 44 beds. And the younger ones, as well as the 18 to 24-year-olds, they're kind of what in the term is the forgotten homeless because we don't see them. They're not on the street with a shopping cart. And I'm not being facetious by any way when I say that, or a person with mental issues or whatever. Many of them are afraid to go home. They're not secure there. And so it's very important. We work with the state legislature, city of Spokane, Spokane County and the valley made this happen, and that's what regional collaboration can do, and it's really needed. We need to address the homeless situation among youth especially, as well as the rest.
Thank you, Tim. Rob?
After I lost my race to Merrick Rooney in 2018, well, I went from a good salary as treasurer to nothing, so I had to get a part-time job. I worked as a security guard for Phoenix, and I worked guarding the Department of Ecology building at Wellesley and Monroe. And I met a lot of the homeless people coming through. There's a, you know, we were there to protect the people from anybody, panhandlers or whoever that were working late. But it was so boring, I talked to everybody that came along unless they were screaming at the air. And I had a lot of good stories. I saw part of life that I'd never seen before, so I'm very sensitive to that.
Thank you, Rob. I think your clock was wrong, if I'm not mistaken. Tim, you have a 30-second rebuttal if you'd like it.
Well, not so much a rebuttal, but I'd just like to add to that. In our zoning in the city of Spokane Valley right now, I would not allow large shelters anyway, which no one on the city council supports. I don't think they work. We could have 10 to 15 people in the shelter. We do have properties that we're looking at, and ARPA money, that's federal dollars, that were given out during the pandemic for these situations. So we're working with nonprofits to find some areas where we could locate small shelters that are more manageable.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, you can go first on this one. Do you think Spokane Valley should impose term limits on city council members?
I was just talking to some people at the break, and the problem with term, I wouldn't, I would not be against term limits if that's what the public would want. The problem we're having in the city of Spokane Valley, and I hope everyone's hearing me sincerely, we want more people to run. I'd like to see more young people get involved. Anytime I talk at a community event or go somewhere in the community, I remind people that, please get involved. It's local government. There's a lot of things going on. It's actually very exciting. And of course, a lot of people, younger people, you know, they're busy with their families. I understand that. And so other people on the council would echo that. And how much would a term limit be? I would start with two terms, in my mind, if we were to go that route.
Thank you, Tim. Rob?
I'm not dogmatic about it. I'm sensitive to term limits. I've had my idea for a while that each position would have 12 years. You know, Contract with America in 94, they were trying to get three terms in Congress, you know, six years, but I don't think that's really quite enough. But that doesn't mean that you're going to stay out of politics, I think, then, as you go maybe run for something else. And then you could bring the wisdom you've learned in that to somewhere else. Like, I think I can bring my wisdom that I learned at the county and in the legislature to the city of Spokane Valley, too. So it all works together, I think. And, but I think people tend to atrophy in the same office for too long.
Thank you, Rob. Tim, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, and I agree with the 12 years. Depending on the, in some terms, they're two years, as Rob mentioned. You barely get started and figure out what's going on before you're running again, and then you're perpetually running for office in two-year terms. The city council is four years, and so that helps quite a bit. So you know you can get involved, and then you're not running for three more years. And if you want to be paying attention to what's going on and how you're managing things, you don't have to be worried about, hey, I have to go out and run again, and then we'll do with what I'm supposed to do at the city.
Thank you, Tim. Rob, is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, I would like to see one six-year term for president. That way, you don't have this big commotion every four years. And I did keep my term limits pledge, too, as a county treasurer, for two terms.
Thank you. All right. Well, I am out of questions for you, so I'm going to give you your chance for closing statements. I believe that, Rob, you went first, so you're going to go first again on this one, so Tim gets the last word.
Okay, I do want to address, one thing came up in a previous debate, and that was Matt Shay. Matt Shay, even Konezovich said Matt Shay had done nothing illegal, even though he described him as a domestic terrorist. And he didn't. In fact, in January 21 of 2021, he was exonerated by the Legislative Committee that investigated that, but you never saw anything in the newspapers about it. So I defended Matt Shay because he had done nothing illegal. And when the sheriff gave his threats we face on Dog and Pony Show, he had my name right underneath Matt Shay's. I've never done anything, even close to being a terrorist of any kind in my life, you know. So people get labeled, and I'm all with Jessica, says it's time to stop that. He hasn't been in office for three years. Also, we get kind of like, oh, well, you're marginalized, you know, you're extreme, and, you know. But how can Matt Shay, one, substantially each of the six times he ran? How can we be extremists if the majority of the valley are for him?
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. Tim?
Well, I just want to give some updates for the people that are not aware of what happened in the past four years, and I'm excited to run again. We completed an overpass at Barker and Trent. We have fully funded the underpass, which it will be at Pines in Trent, and they'll break ground on that next spring. Yes, next spring. We opened a new library, as I mentioned earlier. We've doubled the park size, the space, and yes, a lot of that won't be developed because it's going to take years before we have the money and need to develop that. But the park space we got in the North Bank of the Spokane River at Flora, we were looking at right now adding a world-class cross-country course. We've already been contacted by the NCAA, and if we could have that in place by 2025, they want to stage national events there. It's the least expensive option for that type of sports facility that you can have because we're all going to have a park there, and now they're already being paid for. I've enjoyed the four years. It's gone very fast, and I look forward to being on there for four more years.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you both very much for coming tonight.